I apologize if I'm a little bit sick. I don't know if you're going to laugh. I need to call on everyone else here to help me out with the meeting. Um, just for time's sake, I'm going to ask, we're going to rearrange a little bit on the order of the um agenda items and we're going to discuss the uh trash issue and we have some gentlemen here from
Let's open up the public.
Oh, sorry. Oh, how would you?
Public comment.
We have to do it first. All right, public comments first then. Whoever's first on the list. You can come up to the podium. Please state your name and address.
My name is Matt Barnhart. And my address is four sixty Topahawken Ford Road. That's right where the bridge goes from Marion Township into Hottaburk Township. It's also where a bridge goes from Marion Township into North Hottaburk Township. So I'm right at the crux of three township. And I have had the opportunity to talk to a couple of folks, um neighbors across both bridges as to their service, the trash service. If uh you want to jump the trip, the agenda, um you may make my comments moot. Um, that's all with you folks. Uh, I'll be happy to sit back and listen to what's uh part of the agenda.
No, you're you're in kind of the butcher opinion before we take action.
Well, I appreciate that. Um. When we moved to Marion Township, about thirty years ago, three decades. Um, my house was a derelict at the time. The tenant in the house was throwing trash down over the bank toward the creek. Uh, God knows how long, uh, I had to hire a dumpster and a block pack in order to clean it up. Uh, I'm still having dumping problems. Uh, just recently, somebody threw a roll of carpet off the bridge toward Hottaburk Township that landed partway in the creek and partway out. I had to drag it out, cut it up with a chainsaw. Uh, Eagle Disposal picked it up after I cut it up. Um, Eagle Disposal hauled off a a sliding board from some sort of place that it washed down. And I dragged out of the creek. And again, I had to cut it up, uh but Eagle Disposal took it. Um. Shortly after the carpet appeared, somebody threw a bag, a thirty gallon trash bag full of old Milwaukee cans uh over the bridge. Thankfully, it landed on dry ground. It didn't land in the creek or there had been Milwaukee cans from here to to March. Uh, I had to put a ladder down and bridge abutment to get it. But I got it. Uh, I just threw that in the in the trash. We had a number of problems with Eagle disposal, uh and I wanted to ask, I think kind of the workshop because I wanted to ask the solicitor. I thought you are the solicitor. As far as these contracts are concerned, uh are there performance standards in them?
Yes, there are.
So Eagle disposal could have had the the contract pull the plug at your view, but a little Eagle disposal. When they were making news, they made Harrisburg news, they made Allentown news, uh they made Lancaster news, W G A L. Um. You could have pulled the plug on them at that point. I'm curious why that didn't happen.
The 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 board could have could have fined that trash hauler.
You couldn't be clearly agreement void in terms of
Protect it because
And that remains a a a possibility with the contract that's in place now or is due to take place.
So so the
On April Fool's Day.
The Eagle disposal contract ends at the end of this month. The Mescara contract will start on April first.
On April Fool's Day. I thought that was kind of that was on that whole thing. Um. The the questions that I had, um. You had one bid.
Correct.
Um. With the bid document was posted, it looked like the beginning of February.
Yes.
Uh, could that not have been posted sooner than that?
That's when the township decided to do it.
But it could have been posted when Eagle was in in all fairness.
I guess it could.
Well, it seems like you painted yourselves into a corner and us a bit.
Okay. Uh, here's I here's 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 something that I explained to the board, okay? Marion Township is a rural community. It doesn't have a landfill in close proximity. Given given that and the fact that it doesn't have a bunch of residents, it's not a particularly attractive place for for a trash hauler to come. Okay? So there's a there's a public process to follow under the second pass township code. It's unfortunate that we only got one bid. But we're lucky we even got it.
What would have, what would you have done if you hadn't gotten a bid?
We would have rebid it.
How?
To follow the same process. There's a there's a process to follow. The town, the township prepares a request for proposal. We publicly advertise that. It's it's posted online, depending. And and we need, excuse me, let let me finish explaining the process, okay? It's publicly advertised and then it's open for bidding, okay? Anyone who's part of Penn bid it all, you know. Every trash hauler in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania can can see that that RFP, okay? Then they decide who they want. And if they oh they do, then they do bid. The township reviews those bids to see if they're compliant with the RFP. If they are, we have, we rank them from the lowest I I excuse me, let me let me finish.
Sir, but
Are you going to let me finish?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, we rank them from the lowest responsible bidder to the highest. Under the law, we are required we are required to accept the lowest responsible bid.
You can't renegotiate the bid. You can't reject the bid. You are required to take the
Again, again, we 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 could we could have been let me let me address your question. Yes, we could have rejected the bid, but you run the risk of an even higher price. That happens in 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 a bunch of different places. When I I've seen it happen before where where the township for the borough does not like the bid they get and then it is increased. And Mr. G. D'Nero, who's the attorney for Mescaro, I'm sure can talk to that point. That's the public justice to follow, okay? And we followed that process. It's yeah, I agree. It's unfor- it's unfortunate that we only got one bid. But it's because of the circumstances I just described that we can't control. We can't control that, we can't control that we own three thousand landowners. We can't control that the nearest landfill is twenty five miles away.
I spoke with the solicitor with the Department of Community and other development. And he said you are permitted to solicit bids.
Which is exactly what we did.
You can reach out to a contractor of choice. Uh, so long as you open the bids, you advertise the bids, you give anybody else an opportunity to bid. But you can contact any bidder.
So so what you're proposing
You can contact any bidder.
So what you're proposing is is us, is that the township rejecting the Sarah bid and then personally contact
If you had gotten
That's that's a violation of law.
If you had gotten no bids, you could have done that.
Okay, but we got one bid.
You could have rejected that bid. It says in your bid document, you reserve the right to reject any bid that's not acceptable. If it was a five hundred dollar per quarter charge, that would have been unacceptable. You would have rejected that bid.
And respectfully, you could have turned up at the last meeting when when this was being decided. Okay, we're 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 beyond that point now because there was only
They didn't come up until the beginning of March.
In February meeting, we acted to accept the only bid that we got. Okay, so there there's no going back now. We had accepted that bid. Tonight, we were ratifying the execution of the contract.
But you are working back. I mean, you were having trouble for months and months and months. And actually, the A G, I believe, find Eagle in February for for poor performance in other
Right, you're not going to give it up to them. And that's and that's part of the reason why Eagle is exiting this area because they didn't do a good job.
But they didn't, but
They
I'm going to Barnhart, of course, yes.
Four to five.
Um. Why a three year contract when you don't know how this company is going to perform?
So a three year contract is again, it's standard in the industry. It ensures that the township blocks enterprise for three years. You get the you get the you get the
But it's more than double what the price is now.
And I look at this contract. This contract is vastly different from the contract that we had with Eagle. And because of the problems that we have
The con- the contract is not vastly different. The the hauler, the hauler is different.
Difference. Um, some of the provisions that we had in the bid requested assurances that we didn't have with Eagle. And so the bid itself was, excuse me, the bid itself was vastly different from what was put out for Eagle years ago. And so the assurances that we've gotten from this company are are way different. And we have remedies that we can work with if there's a failure.
You do have remedies because I'm going to
We we have nothing. We have nothing. The old, um, everything. It there was there was nothing. There were very few remedies that we had. With this one, we do have remedies in place.
You would say you could have declared the the contract void for non-performance or if they they weren't doing what they contracted to do. You could have done that last fall.
Who was going to come and get your trash?
Well, that's another question.
Let's go back to letting people get their own hauler. I mean, right out in North Hottaburk, they're doing that. I could probably tack my property on to numerous ones out there. And I checked, I checked, not with a hundred people, but I've checked around with a few people I know. This is way more
A private, private hauler across the downstream bridge from my house is charging ninety dollars a quarter.
No, wait, the person I talked to is sixty seven dollars for two months.
Oh, and that's ninety dollars a quarter.
This is
Yes. So so then my question is, why didn't he bid on the end? That's my question to you.
Maybe they would have if the timing had been different.
They had, they had a month
Maybe they maybe they had taken on more contractors.
Is there a circulation intended that you posted and it's got to be open within a month, four weeks?
Publicly advertised, right? So
In a ready deal which has no circulation and the merchandiser is not out.
See, legislative, but legislative, but changing the law. That we follow the local process.
We we talked to an attorney from D C E D. I talked to the director of the Department of Community for local government all right. You could have sought any legitimate trash hauler in the in the area. There's a there's a company over here in Newmanstown, uh they would have bid on it. Uh, they didn't even get it in. They would have. I talked to them. Well, they might. Uh, they're they're contracted with Hottaburk at this point. It's seventy dollars a quarter in Hottaburk. Now, it was pointed out to me that that's not apples or apple cores and orange peels. Uh, because I don't know the length of that contract. That might be coming up and it might go through the roof. That's certainly a possibility.
Correct, correct.
Uh, but you could have been a little more proactive. When the when the trash ordinance was adopted, I was in favor of it because of the circumstance I described to the people dumping uh on my property, adjacent property, uh I was in favor of it because I thought that the township would negotiate on my behalf uh to get me the best rate possible. And that doesn't seem to be what you guys did.
And if I may, um J P Mescaro is here tonight. And they've also signed up for a public comment.
I offered to jump the agenda.
Yeah, we're jumping agenda, right? But we we can also direct some questions and hopefully when they talk, we can also work through some of these questions together. But I'm just putting
Another question I would suggest you ask the gentleman from Mescaro, I plus that you
Sure.
Uh, another question I would suggest you ask, the escalator cost is an index to any that that goes up every year for three years.
Right, the bid, the bid price.
But it's not index, any. What's the basis for that?
The basis is going to
You don't know what your costs are going to be.
I mean, yes, we get estimated, but they are based as well. But we're going to do this if it needs to be.
It's warm. And it goes up. That's a new
Okay, we're gonna
You're changing your
We're I I thank you for your public comments. We respect them. We nobody is, nobody is happy that, nobody's happy that trash prices are going six, are going, you know, up by fifty, sixty percent. But
It's more than dollars.
That's I I I look, you're pushing the fire. Nobody here is happy that, but it's the way in the world. I mean
Well, I just, I just wanted I just I could have done a better job on our But uh, like I said, that was the reason I supported the trash ordinance. How long ago was that ordinance about? It it had to be fifteen, twenty years ago. What if the ordinance is repealed? You guys could sit there and say, I'm, we're done with that. We're going to, we're going to repeal the ordinance. Are you bound by a contract?
Yes.
Yes.
An ordinance that doesn't exist anymore?
Yes, we're bound You sign a binding agreement with Mescaro that we must honor for at least three years.
We must honor.
That's very I think it Mister Mister D'Nero, I got a public comment.
The state over here, so I don't have my back.
Well, Tom. Yeah, just stand up to the podium of the of reporting to process.
My name is Al D'Nero and I'm deputy general for J D Mescaro in Kansas. Although I'm a lawyer by trade, I've been with a company over thirty three years, so I'm involved as much in the business aspects as I am in the legal. And I want to introduce the two gentlemen that will be responsible for servicing this contract, two long term guy employees. This is our general manager, Mike Gaia. Mike oversees our Berks uh division and his operations manager is brother Dave Markins. These two gentlemen will oversee the service here. Uh, I want to talk to you about three areas, I think, and hopefully answer some of the questions. I'm happy to answer any questions I have that are thrown to me. If I don't know the answers, I'll get it to you. I'd like to think I know an awful lot about it, but I'm not, I'm not perfect. Uh, I've been with the company thirty three years and I can tell you that in those thirty three years, the most challenging time in our company, in our industry, was in the pandemic. That threw everything upside down. And what do I mean by that? First of all, you couldn't have employees shut for work every day. It was a struggle. And I could talk on and on and on about how the pandemic turned our business up, but what I want to tell you is that's set a new blueprint for what's going on in our industry right now. Companies are very challenged to serve their existing customers. We were here uh three year, five years ago and not the low bidder and we certainly wanted the contract. But Eagle had submitted a low bid and they were getting the contract and you saw what you got with Eagle. Uh, the gentleman is talking about all the all the debris and li- and litter this being run. The two most important things in the community. Everywhere I've gone for, you serve three, four years, people talking about safety is the thing. You want to have clean streets. You want to have a clean community. Obviously, you were proactive. You enacted an ordinance that required you to have a township by a hall. Why do that? Because otherwise, there's no way you can be sure that your township tenants will be distributing their waste in the proper way. Sure, I'm not suggesting having a bunch of lawless citizens, but people take trash to work. People run across the street, throw it somewhere else, a dumpster. People take the sheets and put it in the dumpster there. You'd be surprised what we've seen over thirty five years from people trying to get around and pay their fair share. So uh, first of all, uh, yeah, you 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 went out the bid. And I would, I never opened a paper to figure out where a bid is. All of us in our industry are subscribing to services that are big collecting services and everybody that collects trash that's worth a dime will be on that list and they will see. So no one had to read the red label. Uh, because we all know papers description are going by the wayside. Any hollow that wanted to bid on this, that was subscribing to the service would have known about it. That they don't subscribe as service, frankly, that might be an indication you mean that they're not willing to be able to do it because you have financial requirements and financial uh things in your bid to make sure that they're performed on the spot. But I mean, I just want to give you a residence and idea and honestly, I don't want to sell anyone's intelligence. So that we go to the birthing pool. We buy gas. We go to Walmart, we go anywhere, we see how prices have done up. But just to give you an idea, uh, in my letter to you, uh, when I was talking about why uh cost of what they were, since two thousand twenty uh, these costs have skyrocketed in the industry and these are particularly what our increases are about. Uh, entry rates, the cost of borrowing money has gone up one hundred sixty five percent. Wages, we had an increased wage of sixty five percent. Had to because we valued our employees and we needed to do that to get them to show up because during the pandemic, people weren't coming to work. There are too many reasons aside from health and real uh 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 issues. People just felt they could sign up, there's nothing to collect and not come to work and make more money out of some of the government handouts and what they would get coming to work. Our equipment costs, our trucks, takes a year and a half to get a truck in time for the order. The truck costs went from about two hundred fifty, two hundred seventy five thousand to over three hundred fifty thousand dollars. The equipment has gone up over thirty five percent. The fuel, we don't see what the diesel fuels uh between four or five dollars a gallon. Uh, repair costs are over fifty percent. Insurance costs, what we have to pay current costs. I'm sure all your residents have seen it in our homeowners cost and in our auto bill liability cost. Our costs have gone up thirty five percent in insurance. Uh, recycling. Uh, things change in the recycling market. You don't think it's permanent, but it changed in the short term. China stopped accepting plastics. With people staying at home, people are generating a lot more recyclable materials. The supply became greater than demand, so now we have this problem handling recyclables. We spent sixty, sixteen million dollars on a new recycled plant. Everyone your recyclable material, we're taking that plant down the road right outside of Burge Grove. But it costs now, it costs more to handle it because of not completely available market. We still recycle everything. Plastics, one percent, cardboard, aluminum, e- everything, glass, uh and lastly, disposal. And any bid disposal, the landfill, you're supposed to make mention that, that's probably about thirty five to forty percent of the bid price is a disposal. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of hollows that don't have long term access to disposal. Those costs are expensive. So for somebody to come in and bid this cost, bid this contract for three years, they need to make sure that we get a performance spot which partly have necessary financial security. They need to make sure they have ability to figure out what their costs are because I can assure you, when we figured out our costs in twenty nineteen, we can count the pandemic. We were losing money on contracts. We honored those contracts and we won through this through its completion. Disposal cost. There's a there's a good disposal. When I started in the company thirty five years ago, there were five hundred landfills. Now there's about fifty, forty five to fifty. There's less and less disposal capacity. And in in the in the not too distant future, we anticipate there's going to be a disposal crunch where there's not a lot of plant holes because no one wants a landfill. Uh, I'm sure you can understand that. So those costs are 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 what were reflected in in the bid. I used to get a cup of coffee at Walmart for a dollar fifty. Now it's two dollars and forty eight cents. I used to get a honey for three dollars. Now it's six, now it's six dollars. Uh, all those things, everything that everyday consumer sees has been magnified in our industry. And what's also magnified in our industry is the ability to not take on new work. Very few companies are able to take on new work. Why are we different? We're not a national public company. We can't compete with waste management throughout the country. We don't compete with waste payment company. The green trucks, the same with the blue trucks, ready to have a landfill, I'm sorry, B F I. But in Berks County, nobody can beat us. We have the best infrastructure in Berks County because we have hollow division in Redding, right outside of Redding, Exeter Township. We have a million dollar recycling plant right outside of Redding and Exeter Township. And we have a disposal site. So we are, we are and we are situated in such a, such a favorable way that that's the reason why we have more contracts than any other single hour ready and in the in the in the Berks County area. I talked about, I talked about the cost. Uh, and and I'll I'll leave some of these here for you to lay out because they're they're real costs. Uh, you all saw them. I wanted you to rest and see this because I I understand this, you know, it's it's hard earned money and and people want to take their costs. But it's a, it's a fact of life as what's going on as as to as to as to show you that you dangerous diligence, you advertise, just anybody that wanted to bid on this contract could have bid on it. I I submit you, they didn't bid on it for one or two reasons. Number one, they didn't bid on it because they couldn't have the ability to take on new work. Waste management is a fifteen billion dollar company, the largest in the world. They didn't bid on this contract. You can't name a new leverage contract. I'm sure you can do it by this time. Because they subscribe to the same service we do, Republic, a twelve billion dollar public company. That's a landfill in um in um uh New Orleans. I want to, I I thought immediately where they would be incumbent hauler from three to five years ago, they didn't bid. If if we got ten contracts in Berks County in the last twelve months, eighteen months, at least six of them were a single bid, no other bidder. Why? No different than Marion Township because it's a very challenging, tolerant industry with all these unknown costs and no one has an infrastructure in Berks County. I'm not saying what we're doing in Berks County, you can do somewhere else in state. No, our bread and butter is really east of Susquehanna and we're strategically situated to be really competitive here. But I want to give you some examples. Marion Township, the calculations I have is going up one hundred twenty two percent. Exeter Township, recycling home, their cost went up seventy seven percent. What's the difference in Exeter Township? Our landfill is right there. Our recycling center right there. We got to drive forty minutes to get out of there. I don't know what trash hauler is closer than we are, but I guarantee you one thing. We leave our depot right next to the landfill. We drive back and we can dump. Someone else who wants to build this has to come into the township, has to figure out whether they have disposal waste, go out all the way back. It's not cost effective for them and that's why this isn't a traffic job. And you see what happened to me. You see how it's kind of a certain safety button. God knows more than a ticket, your trash. But your trash under our landfill will go to the Pioneer Crossing landfill. It's one of the most environmentally sound landfills in the state. If you call the D D D and tell you it's a, it's one of the safer landfills, they're very pleased with our environmental compliance record. We haven't had a notice of violation in over ten years. It's a small landfill. And it's a landfill that serves us, serves local communities. We have many communities in Redding, in the Redding area and in Berks County that we don't collect their trash, but their pollers bring the trash to our landfill. But it's strategically located. Uh, Amity Township, recycling contract done way uh awarded to us at the end of uh twenty twenty two, went up one hundred thirty four percent. We were the only bidder. Exeter Township, I just mentioned, we were the only bidder. I've heard the same cries from people in the community. Why no other bidders? Same answer. Main Creek Township went up one hundred twenty one percent. Shillington Borough went up one hundred and four percent. West uh Borough, why missing? Went up one hundred eighty two percent. We were the only bidder. Why missing? West Posbrook, I asked someone to give me only Montgomery, only Bucks Borough, but they gave me West Posbrook, that's just on the edge. That went up one hundred forty six percent and we were the only bidder there. So that that's the state of the industry. And honestly, you have a blue chip company. There's nobody better situated to provide you with the service in your township. It'll be like night and day. We're the Rolls Royce in in comparison to what you have. You won't have to worry about our service. You have two guys here. When you write your check and pay off or when your residents pay off, it doesn't go to someplace in Arizona like Waste Management or Houston, Texas, like Republic, it comes right down the road in Montgomery County because we're a local business. And we employ local people. We have a significant workforce from from the township. As to your particular, as to your particular price, it's gone up. No deny. I'm not going to deny it. It's gone up. And and you know, we went and most of these contracts that I was recited for you were five year contracts. Most communities want to go with a five year contract. It's it's fine for a guy that says, I want to bid on this and I'll charge you seventy dollars and each month a month. And this trash, this disposal rates go up in the next month, they say, you're new bill. The reason why you go with a municipal like this location is you lock in on your price, but you can budget and you can prepare for the next three years. You know what the costs are. And we can't charge in three years what our price is today because our costs are going to continue to go up. So we have to, we have to uh estimate you know, what normally we think will be, the increase is not going to be crazy increases we're up to now, but we can't well, when we bid on this job, we give you a price of twenty twenty four. We can't keep the same price of twenty twenty six to twenty twenty two. You know, in in places that were skyrocketing, we don't think so to be like that, but we had, we had, we had a factor in the price. I was asked to comment and and answer three questions. First question was residents don't believe the township bid enough to encourage bidders. I I I'm being sure that anybody that wanted to bid on this contract knew that. And for somebody to tell you now, oh, I wanted to bid on this.
And I will, I will say for the record, the township did have enough time to to reject all bids and rebid if it desired. It did not do that because we didn't want to risk further pricing. Yes.
You know, we, I I've seen situations where we're only once bid, they put the bid out and they wouldn't get it. And they wish it in, put the bid out. So you you certainly, uh I don't care whether you have to bid six months ago or six weeks ago, the prices have continued to escalate and you you have not done yourself any any better service by going out long, uh, three, three months ago versus that's like month. Frankly, that's the norm. Usually, usually six, eight, ten weeks out. You know, if you go, if you go too far out, then the contractor has to think, well, now I'm looking, I'm looking at this second July, it's going to take effect in January. And I gotta maybe maybe I have to speculate a little more, figure out how much more I want for you because I'm not sure. So I I don't believe, and I'm not, I'm not here to defend a township other than I think they wanted to the best contract and deserve it now here. But I I respectfully say that there wasn't anything else you could have done. Uh, residents are concerned about the city and increase of senior population. Well, there's a senior discount. But but mind you, I want to make sure people understand that senior discount doesn't eliminate the cost of the recycling. So if when you start adding up the bags, I'm not sure how much cheaper that is. I mean, there's some discount to it, but but
And you you have to buy them in lots of
Buy lots of five. Oh, so
And if it's eight dollars every five, you spend Forty dollars.
Spend forty dollars. And and the recycling, the recycling charge is is different than the trash store. If you add a load up, if you use too many bags, it's better to go with the non, non lower things. And the third question was residents have to supervise them after we find ways to reduce pricing. Well, the way the public bidding system works and you're supposed to the role of firmness is you said you put out a set of bid specs. And under law, those bid specs are mandatory and the bidders have to follow it. They have to follow it to be, and your solicitor said, the lowest responsible bidder. But once you put those specs out, you can't change the term of the contract. I can't say to you, well, we'll give this person a discount. We'll do that. The only discounts we were allowed to get is what the specs have for two percent from pre-pandemic. There can't be, there can't be any change in the service we're providing as to what you advertise because otherwise, where you're violating the public bidding law, can't make the change. The only change it could make, and it's not, it's not, doesn't give anybody, it wouldn't give us an unfair advantage, it wouldn't give you an unfair advantage. Just, I think someone asked about, well, what if the township did the bill? And 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 we sent, we sent you one bill and I had no account. We've been asked to do that. People think it's a lot. This is going to be a big price difference. It's not. It'd be twenty four dollars a month less. So if you wanted us to send you one bill and you build a residence, our price, we factor in, it'd be about twenty four dollars a year.
It's important to understand that there, we we we, the township understood that if we build for the service, it would be, it would be significantly less. But we didn't put that in in our specs because we don't have the asset to do that. We only have one employee. We don't, we don't have the ability to send out bills for five hundred people a quarter. We just, we don't. Please continue.
So i- i- in a nutshell, I I don't know if that should satisfy people, but it's the honest, legitimate answers. That's what we're given that one bid, why you got the cost that you got and why you can't change uh uh you advertised and you wanted a contract and I can And I can assure you that you will have, you won't have any problem with the service uh, under our company. We're not perfect, does that mean we won't have a miss? No, we may have a miss, but we have a supervisor that will be in your township every time our truck's been here collecting. And we have a standard procedure that before the truck leaves the township or before the supervisor leaves the township, there's a call made to the offices, if you have any complaints, are there any misses? We try to get them before we leave, we don't get them before we leave and it costs them and we get them in the next day. You won't have what we have with eagle or trash or city, we're not predicting. This is a family business and the family name is on the side of the truck. They take great pride in the service they provide. Pandemic threw everybody upside down, but never do we have that kind of situation. And we took steps to make sure we're better situated now than we were before the pandemic. Costs us a lot more money and unfortunately, we operate on cost plus profit. And, and, and honestly, our profit here is a fair profit, we're not doubting anybody. The fairest indication of what these other prices are, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. I'll answer any questions you have.
Before, before we take any action with respect to this matter, does anyone in the audience have any other public comments on the trash contract or questions for Mr. Pichanero? If so, please come up, say your name, address. We'll make a contact.
Albert Veronio, Fifty-Five Main Street, Safer. When there's trash business. You're sorry about the price going up or whatever, maybe they blame the Democrats for that.
Okay, all right, let's find.
First of all, people can't afford this big double-digit, uh, to attract, on a sixty-some balance of track. Why we were paying seventy-two, seventy-three? I went around and checked around the run, like, like Stonecroft, Woolworths Dorf, in the area, even up here at TNT. None came close to the, to that number, none.
I don't, I don't know when those contracts began.
Huh?
I don't, I don't know when those contracts began, they could have began before the pandemic.
Was there anybody called at different places?
I, I don't understand, I don't understand the question, I don't understand the question.
The question is, anybody called a different company for, for, for a, a number?
I, I just told Mr. Barnhart that we can't do that.
Why not?
Because the law doesn't allow it.
It does allow it.
The law does not allow it. I don't care, I don't care, I don't care what someone from the D E C D told you, the law does not allow it. Okay, we're gonna get sued by Mestera if we reject their bid.
I'm not suggesting you reject the bid at this point, my concern, he addressed it.
No, I'm saying, if, if we had, excuse me, if we had rejected the bid at the last month's meeting and then individually contacted other contractors, Mestera would have sued us because they were the load responsible bidders, that's what would have happened. We are not permitted to go individually solicit others to make bids. We put it out publicly to advertise, it was on a bid, and Mr. Pichanero said, anyone who wanted to bid on it couldn't. There are, there are circumstances here that make trash hauling in this township difficult and unique. That's why we only got one bid. It is, I, I hear, I hear everyone's concerned about the, about the price, it's not something that we're going to control, we're controlled.
When I moved here in nineteen eighty-five, okay? The supervisor we had here, when something happened or they want to do something, they send a flyer to every, every house. That's all gone, people don't know what they have, their calendar are gone, they don't know. The last meeting we had done at, at the school. You know how many people knew that the meeting was there? Three. About the store.
About one hundred and twenty-five people.
Yeah.
So why, why, what's it, for only three people now?
Huh?
For only three people knew about it?
Only three, because I talked to them, they didn't know about the meeting.
You talked, you talked to one hundred and twenty-two people and told them about the meeting?
Huh?
You talked to one hundred and twenty-two people and told them about the meeting?
I didn't talk to one hundred and twenty people, but a hundred and twenty-some people got the, the, the flyers that myself and, and my neighbor, we put out so people know what's going on.
Do you have, do you have any other questions with respects to the trash bid? If not, we're gonna move on. If any other questions about the trash bid? I, look, I, I, I hear you on the price, I, I do.
So now, where? So now it's a hundred and sixty-one? A month?
No. One hundred and twenty-two.
A month. Don't count me off the floor, because now there's people here, but I have an hour.
Okay. The, the regular service, regular service, by quarter is a hundred and eleven dollars, nine percent of the trash, two hundred and one dollars, seventy-three cents. Fifty dollars, twenty-three cents. So it's probably a hundred and fifty, two dollars a quarter.
Okay. Next quarter, what's going to go up to?
Every county, people get, thank you over here. And if the price is actually the same for the, any grant, I see, I saw, if you prepay, it's saying three point five percent.
Did you say, we gotta do better than that? If I can't do better, I have to, you have to send it out. The next meeting, you know, for the last, the last people that would kick the way, and they, they know. I said, what's, what?
Oh.
I was supposed to say, no, I don't want to talk. So, this is, this is. You gotta call your answers. Why don't we make phone calls? Go off these people here, they've been getting a bid. Let me explore for one, one bid and. Oh, one more thing, mine is the snow rock. They're finding the snow in the alley, and so you have to learn back the order. So whoever did the alley, I want them to come back and fix it.
Excuse, excuse me, excuse me. Please continue.
Whoever dug up the back of my yard, I want them to come back and fix it. Here. It's still like that since the snow, I got pictures taken. I mean, they don't know how to pick up the flies, so and pull, pull away from people that got the car parked there. They want everybody to move their cars when the snow came, everybody moved it. You know where the cloud, right there by the white line? And that's where they stop. So why move the cars? Why go through that block and move the cars?
I don't know how this sounds, so.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, well, that's, right, right. That, that's, right for you. But whilst we're not having, whilst we're not having vehicles.
Okay. But I'll put your page.
Just, just to what I was saying. The, the meetings haven't changed, um, the workshop meetings are still on Saturdays, the week before, Thursday. Uh, yeah, before the, uh, Thursday meeting, so for those of you that feel that you're unformed, as far as I know, meeting times have not changed. The meeting dates always posted, you could always call into the office to see when the meetings are. So if anyone feels like they're missing out on any issues, they've all been, the stuff at the meeting as well posted on YouTube. So if anyone needs to catch up on anything, they'll be the one to pick up.
If there are any other public comments or questions on the trash, then I think at this point, the board is going to entertain a motion to ratify the execution of the Notice of Award and the contract for trash and recycling services. Do we have that motion almost?
Do we need to vote for twenty-eight and twenty-nine? We don't have one running around twenty-nine, do we need any votes in this one?
I have, I have one seven, so I don't know what we're gonna do.
So. There's other stuff, I mean, there's a new one.
So this is under twenty-nine. Twenty-nine.
Ooh, do we need a gap?
Okay, so the, the the mo- the motion of the board is a motion to ratify the execution of the Notice of Award and the trash and recycling contract with Mestera for a three-year term with two options. Uh, it's been a motion to second, you're gonna vote on that. Irene?
At least I have to.
Who seconded this, or?
I seconded, Jesse made the motion. Roquel, Irene, I, Jessie.
Hi. Thanks guys.
Hey, thank you so much for your time. Close, I, we've got my number, so you have to contact me, because the office is typically closed around two thirty. So we've seen this double around with the agenda for the seat of, of, um, of J P Mestera when their council received, the agenda has continued on further.
Thank you.
I, I have to apologize, I have not received any of the meeting, um, minutes from the fire of workshops, any of the other meetings. I have not, I have not seen them, so I'm, I'm anxious, uh, Jessie and I, so I have not reviewed them. So then we will table this for the next meeting and I apologize for anyone's inconvenience, so are you okay with that? Uh, treasurer's report, um, oh my goodness, um, I'm sorry, I've run my head into a fog, because I'm not feeling well and I apologize. Um, I've just been calling the house meeting issues, we seem to have like a weird occurrence on our money monitor account for liquid fuels. I got that straight out of the bank, was a terror on their part. Um, a thing of, of, more of a historical thing, just to kind of, um, have to discuss with you and Peter. Uh, QuickBooks is changing their policies, so we have the option of buying the newest package for twenty twenty-four, which is different from the previous things. Usually we buy the license and it would be good for a couple of years. Now what they're telling me, you have to buy the license plus, uh, I think it was five hundred and forty dollars, something like that, a year for annual subscription. I was like, what? The other option is keeping the version that we have, but if there's any defects or problems with it, we can't do anything with that. The other option is going for an online version, which would plus us anywhere between thirty to forty-five dollars a month. I've worked with, uh, with online versions in the past and I wasn't a big fan of it, although they're showing me that it's different. Um, I guess it'd be a little bit easier to have that discussion, but we did have an outside accountant that we worked with in the past and I, I I wanted to get his input and plus there's a couple of this more, kind of issues that I have about the program itself. So I think I'll table this for the next, um, for the next, uh, meeting as well, wanted three of us to discuss it, but I guess I, I, I'll table for the next meeting because I need to ask permission to contact this outside accountant to see about some of these little minor issues that we have with the program. I guess we'd be best served at the workshop meeting, forgive me, I wasn't at the workshop meeting because I've been ill. I'll move on to the next agenda item and that's the approval for the payment of bills for February and March. And that, that information is available for the public to review. Um, I'll make the motion to approve the payment of bills for both February and March.
I'll say.
Roquel, Irene, uh, Jessie.
Hi.
Next item for discussion is the Olson Design Group. Oh, I apologize, any further public comments? You please come up to the podium, my apologies.
I'll be brief. My name is Heather Hannah and I'm running for State House District Five. Your lovely township is in District Five. Um, I have a history here this area, um, some of you may recall, um, the Cheaters Farm down over the bridge, past the gun farm, up around the bend. My husband and his children and myself used to have Thanksgiving dinners with them and we miss them dearly. But every year for Thanksgiving, we drove through here. And so I'm pleased to be here tonight to just say that I am running for State House District Five. My goal is to learn stuff by going to all these township and borough meetings and I have learned a lot so far. And this evening I learned a lot about trash. And, um, I just appreciate the opportunity and I will, that's my heart's desire, thank you. Thank you. Please, Mayra, for the rest of the, because there's a lot. No, I, I need your, there's a lot of my things. I, I'm not curious for going through these papers pretty quickly, so. Glad to start, thank you. Anything further, anyone else? Thank you. Next item is the Olson Design Group, um, this was supposed to be a presentation of the new building. Unfortunately, we, um, we're one, we are not able to, because Peter is not here to help us with the computers, so we couldn't have a presentation. So again, that'll be discussed at a future meeting, my, my apologies. Um, the next item is the D C E D COVID-nineteen RPA Multi-Purpose Community Facilities Grant Program. Uh, this is to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-four dash seven. And this is for the proposed new building, but this has been changed a bit. So I'll ask Kindley to come up to the podium to explain this.
All right, so the D C E D opportunity is due April twentieth and this will allow us to pursue design and planning of the multi-purpose community facility. Um, I am working with Engineer Hess and Olson Design Studio to put together the proposed package and the D C E D opportunity does not require a match from the township. So you would not have to put forward any township funds, which makes it a really nice opportunity. It is made possible from the American Rescue Plan Act, the COVID-nineteen funding, and it is designated for, um, this particular infrastructure.
Um, the next agenda item is the, the Senator Casey Discretionary Funding, F Y two zero twenty-five. That is, is this, this was the meeting that I have with you via the phone?
Yes, so fiscal year twenty twenty-five, this was traditionally called earmark funding, there's been a couple of things for it. But Senator Casey's office is supportive of Marion Township applying on behalf again of design and planning for a potential community center. And again, remaining in discussion with the architect and engineer Hess to put together that proposal. That grant application is also being supported by Representative Dan Muser. I contacted his office and they're putting their full support behind it. This one does have a required match component. We are a rural community, which puts us at the highest level of potential grant funding. The federal government, if awarded, would award seventy-five percent of our request. And the township would be responsible for up to twenty-five percent of that request.
So did we shift gears from this with, with respect to not the entire award for our building, but in fact with just the planning stages at this point?
Correct, we're not including construction because we are not far enough along. We don't have the final design, so you develop the plans that would enable us to crew a budget, um, for this building. I will note that discretionary funding is highly scrutinized as public spending. So the congressman will make sure that the project is initiated and follows through on every request and parameter.
So what's, what's the maximum authority provided for the resolution?
Uh, the maximum is the two million dollars, that's the grant threshold. We will be asking for less significantly less than the grant threshold. That was my further question to verify that the resolution still stands and we are requesting less.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess just to clarify, what we initially thought we could do is request the entire amount uh, up to the two million dollars. After taking a step back and realizing there are other costs that really may not have been thoroughly examined, we said, uh-oh, and we put the brakes on, I said, we're not there yet. So we really have to take a step back and although it was kind of nice to say, hey, this grant's in our lap, let's go for it. We, we realized we're not really prepared to ask for that whole two million. Right now, tentatively, the project that we're looking at is new building across the street. The, this ground would then become, um, the garage and salt shed. Um, the total package would be about four point five million. The concept was, though, is to build the new building, leave the building open until that building is there so we can still function. So we wouldn't have to rent space, uh, for whole meeting purposes. Um, and we, we have, and we, so we have the facility, move across the street, then we can have this building, uh, removed and then build the new garage facilities here. In reflecting upon some of the early work that had been done by the Olson Group, we realized there was a big lack when it comes to stormwater management, as, as well as possible sewer hookups, etc. There was a lot that was lacking. Some of the other finer points, I think, were, we didn't really incl- include in his proposal that they gave us renovation of the park, which is a big must in, in my book. Um, we want to be able to accommodate more athletics, hopefully, we have to have A D A access, um, and, um, other, um, green opportunities, at the solar, we need, uh, some type of a, a generator system for the building if we're gonna use it as evacuation point. So only other little fine details, which we're kind of hold our breath on because we got excited over this great opportunity, I think weren't really included in that whole workup that we were initially given by the.
And I think that's what it was, purely a preliminary.
Yeah.
Yeah, none of those features are covered, we didn't probably included in that type of study that he conducted. So this grant application will allow you to design
Yep.
space to create everything you need and that figure that we presented is truly. Space to create everything you need, and that figure that we presented is truly conceptual. Don't know the actual spare footage or any of these requirements from the building, what it will ultimately be. So we're only going for design funding, which is significantly less than that.
And so hopefully we'll have a little bit of a better opportunity in that respect. As well as down the road, being able to happen to other great opportunities, other funding opportunities. Um, you know, so I feel like. We, we almost jumped the gun, but we didn't, we held back, and thank you, everyone who took a, a second look at it and said. Hey, wait a minute, put the brakes on here, we need to really consider what we're doing, rather than putting ourselves in an awkward position of not having enough money to. Thank you, thank you Chuck, and for even put on this too, thank you so much, Kimberly, so thank you.
Kimberly, one question, so, so the D C E D COVID nineteen ARPA money?
Yes.
Are you still gonna be making that?
Yes, we're gonna be in communication with you and, uh, Olson together, because that allows us more time to put together documentation and revision of design requests.
April thirty.
Yes.
So, so then really.
Yes.
So, uh. But it was mentioned that, that ARPA money would be used for the design and planning, I think your intention is the design and planning is under the discretionary funding. From Senator Casey.
And that's what we need further discussion upon, is we are designating portions that you're seeing in terms of Senator Casey. And then what could we ask for from the COVID portion?
Right.
That's reasonable to complement what we're requesting for the design.
Yeah, because the discretionary funding twenty point four is due tomorrow.
Yes, the twenty twenty fifth.
So you're gonna have, you're gonna, my understanding that was gonna be the design and planning funding.
Yes.
Okay. This, it was mentioned under the ARPA.
It seems duplicative, but I only say that because I do not personally have the information yet from you and Olson Design Studio. To separate or designate which portion of this building is going for.
Right, the, the resolutions give the township the authority to make applications for the grants for the. Design, planning, annual construction.
Yeah, and up to the maximum. Yes, for less, you're, you're still covered by that.
So, so the language of both these resolutions, I'm going, I'm already making a motion then.
Correct.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chuck. So then Lisa, I'm gonna make the motion to adopt. Resolution twenty twenty four dash seven, which is the D C E D COVID nineteen ARPA multi-purpose community facility program grant. And does it say anything?
I'll second it.
Irene, hi, Desi. No, that's okay, yeah, yeah. Um, the next motion I'll make is to adopt the resolution twenty twenty four dash eight. Which is the Senator Casey discretionary funding for the year twenty twenty five. Alright, next item for discussion is approving the spring twenty twenty four newsletter for the website. Roll call Irene, hi, Desi. Thank you, you guys did a nice job on that too, so again, everyone, please get over to our website, there's more and more information on it. And, and the ladies in the office are doing fantastic job of keeping up with that, and I really appreciate the work.
Alright, um, we have the summer one out too, that just got done today.
Excellent, I just want, it's nice, it's nice. And I know everyone is maybe in the habit of getting mail, but mail costs a lot for us to go to printing and, and get a piece of mail costs a lot. So if you don't have access to computer, or those go to the public library. Um, one of, part of the plan of the new building is to be able to enable the public to have access to computers. So we're gonna try in, in our. Um, meeting essentially to have a computer available for people to use if you can't get to a meeting, or if you can't get to the library, whatever the circumstances. Or you're not computer literate, uh, we're gonna try to have a program. That, um, helps our residents, uh, enable usage, that's part of some of what we're looking forward to on our grant application. To sort of find, so that work with one of our local high school students, help people with computer literacy in our community. So I'm hoping that's part of our program of our, at our new, uh, facility too, so. Uh, we also have text alerts available, again, you could go onto our website and sign up for it, there should be a number of prompts that you could follow. If you have trouble with that, you can call up to the office in the ways, we'll help you with that as well, because we do have, um. The, uh, oh my gosh, my brain is stopping, I'm so sorry, um. When you get an alert, what's it called? Civic ready, but.
And we do put reminders out.
Yeah.
Through that same technical service.
Thank you. Alright, private community association, H M S, in that regard. Uh, valid, but the summer one is coming out, we have some new ones, yes. She just got them today, uh, supervisors haven't had a chance to, uh, review again. I can't, I can hand out the one that they just approved. But the, what's the, they, they haven't approved of it yet, so.
We would appreciate.
Oh, yeah, but I can tell you that, uh, yeah, we did put some of the, the events on the, the summer one.
Yes, contact me anytime.
Alright, next item for discussion, and forgive me, Jesse, because I wasn't here for the workshop meeting. Uh, sewage management programs, uh, the scheduled annual online maintenance meeting. Oh, another call, oh, forgive me, the max five thirty seven special study, I'll need to adopt the, uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash nine. I thought that was wonderful, thank you. Um, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution twenty twenty four dash nine, which is act five period seven, the special study.
And I will second that.
Roll call Irene, hi, Desi.
Hi.
I just hope you accept it. Uh, I'm sorry, next item, sewage management program, the scheduled annual online maintenance meeting for May twenty twenty four. Well, this is a special to workshop meeting on that, forgive me.
Um. There really wasn't much to say.
Yes, yes.
So we are proposing the annual meeting for the online subject management program. As part of the D E P requirements for a subject management program. Part of that requirement is to have annual education for all residents who own or operate an online system. It would essentially just be implemented on best practices. For operating your system and keeping it, um, operating well, essentially. So do's, don'ts, and, um, as always, residents are welcome to ask questions about. Um, how we are observing the systems for that matter, so it's a one night. Um, brief presentation that's open to the top line as per D E P.
So I guess, do you, do you recommend that we do something similar to what we did for the town hall, renting a larger space, so that more people could attend?
That is up to your best, I don't know, we could give out some flyers, you can welcome around town.
It's gonna help us, why not, right? Yeah, okay, yeah, and so we'll have to take that into consideration, this is the next meeting, we as well, um, have that discussed.
This, this is what I'm wanting to, I wouldn't. For the, for the time, just to authorize hyperparas sending of another online management letter to the residents.
During the meeting dates, just put it in that letter.
Alright, for next, for, for this year? What do you want another meeting this year?
Prefer twenty twenty four, yeah, twenty twenty five.
And when do you propose to have that meeting?
Theoretically, yeah, because the start of the growing season is when observations and. Is traditionally taking on, taking place, and that's the best time to evaluate your system.
I don't know if we've been able to, well, to hear.
Well, we. We, we don't know the availability, we're on schedules tonight to do that.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to work through that if we need it.
We could authorize the subject coordination. Town staff to get a date, if they can send the letter. The letter, have as much advance notice as possible.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the. You'd wanna make a motion to, to send the letter and set the meeting date for that purpose. On, on a date certain to be determined.
You got that, Lisa? Uh, yes, I mean, so started, uh, so, Jesse, make a motion, you seconded it, roll call. I'm so, my guys, I'm really not feeling well. Yeah, thanks, straight.
It's okay.
It's gonna be cold medicine, um, okay, thank you, Kimberly, again. Our next item is the proposed short-term rental ordinance, turning Garland Blake the board to review some of the discretionary and legislative open end questions. Presented by the ordinance, enforcing the entire property maintenance code with specific sections when it's something easier. Again, was this something that we, you had discussed at length during the, um. Uh, workshop meeting?
Not in length, I think Peter, but.
Okay, Peter unfortunately is not here, so I have that Collins paperwork, and I have that some of the other, um. Uh, local, local municipalities paperwork, I'll spread it ahead on the desk for you to review them, so we could bring this again up for discussion for next meeting. Unless.
He has, he hasn't, but my update for the board is I could. Use it, the ordinance is a, you know, fine form that's ready to be. Um, approved for advertisement, the only, the only question for the board, and the only comment Peter had. Was whether we're going to set a, some minimum thresholds for what, for what constitutes. Short-term rental, right, because you, you can, you can say, you know, any dwelling unit that's rented for less than thirty days is a short-term rental. You could also say, any dwelling unit that's rented at least three times in a year for under thirty days is a short-term rental. So the, the question is whether you want to set a, a floor. For the order, for, 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 your flexibility of the order.
Yeah.
Right, but of, of course, the, the, the higher you set that floor, the less people it regulates and covers. So that's kind of the fine line to the law. I've also prepared a, a resolution, um, to be adopted at, at the same time ordinance is enacted. And that resolution specifies the, the codes to be enforced under the ordinance and a fee to be paid, right? So there's, there's a permanent application fee, and there's an expected fee. And, um, you know, the, the code being enforced on the property maintenance, so the building code, of course, even the fees can change. And the property maintenance codes that board has, town has, can change. And so you want to delegate those to a resolution, because resolution is easier to adopt in an ordinance, or an amendment of ordinance, which needs to be. Advised. Uh, so those are, those are the two documents, there's really only one question for the board, and that's, you know, where do you want to set that, that floor? Uh, for, for regulation, and, and really now I have it as being. Three times i- in a year, I think at one point it managed in five, it's just a, a question for the board to decide.
Okay.
I think ultimately, if you give me that feedback by next month's meeting.
Okay.
We can be, we can be in a place where this ordinance can be approved for advertisement and announced at.
At the next meeting.
At, not the next meeting, but at the meeting after next, which would be, this is the more, it would be the main, main.
That shouldn't be a problem, I, I was, I was extremely pleased with everything that you wrote up. I guess I want to understand Peter's concerns a little bit more before we go ahead and approve it.
And, and, you know, only other thing I'll mention is that pursuant to the board's feedback. This short-term rental ordinance now does cover hotels and hostels in the township.
Science, excellent.
And then just, um, piggybacking off of that topic, the long-term rental inspection. Ordinance is very similar to a short-term rental inspection ordinance, it's just, you know. Instead of the, the short-term rental definition is, you know, any dwelling unit on a premises in township, that's for under thirty days. Well, the long-term rental ordinance is, is simply any dwelling unit on a premises in the township that's rented for more than thirty days. So they're go, they're going to be very similar, uh, which is the goal, because application and enforcement will be easier. If we're not trying to decipher anything, or produce, uh, how different ordinances.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I recommend, let's finish up the short term, and throw that enacted, hopefully, at the May meeting. And then we'll just move on to the long-term, uh, rental ordinance, and try to get that enacted by the end of summer.
Okay. Thank you, I'm very, very much.
So I would just, I would just say for, uh, Lisa, uh, for next month's agenda, make sure. That this matter for the short-term rental ordinance knows the board's potential approval for advertisement.
Correct, yeah, we'll just, we'll just get Peter's feedback, being moved out. And have that forwarded to Colin, and then we can move forward, I mean, I was more than satisfied with the ordinance that I had. Sure, sure, absolutely, we could, we could do that during work, we didn't. Never need to go then, alright, so, but I'm gonna move on, just as Colin had just mentioned, the proposed long-term rental inspection ordinance. We're gonna leave that for discussion for the next meeting. Our next item for discussion is forty fifty, Conrad Weiser Parkway.
Again, this is, this is my update.
Okay.
Based upon the board's motion at last month's meeting with authorized, well, the filing of.
Yep.
Administrator of criminal search warrants, I had reached out to Craft. And the Tulpa Hawk Township Solicitor to start to obtain the information that we've learned. When Craft and the police department responded to the emergency in December. Um, I'm still in the process of gathering some of that information, I, I don't wanna. I don't wanna speak too much about the topic, because it does concern, uh, potential litigation and an ongoing investigation, so I will, uh. I'll make this substance matter further executive checking out at the board's meeting, when other action will be taken on it's maybe.
Thank you. Alright, next item for discussion is the Westenberg's joint zoning ordinance, section four three amendment, this is for the moving pets. As small to the mesquita park animals, this meeting is in April, April eighteen at seven P M. At Heidelberg Township, and Peter and Jesse will be attending, excellent, yay.
I would just, uh, move it to crew.
Alright, we're gonna motion to recruit, uh, the attendance of Peter and Jesse to the Westenberg's joint zoning ordinance. Uh, Western Berks, George, that, I just said it already, I'm sorry, I need to meet teeth at seven P M.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, Irene, hi.
Desi.
Alright, oh boy, the next item is the property maintenance issue at six, the Canal Road, which is owned by AT and T. Craft has sent the demolition order for the shed in August, um, on here, has suggested sending one final letter to AT and T. And which have relocated the headquarters in New Jersey. And I guess you spoke to the property owners on either side, and so we're moving ahead with that.
Right, so, tonight I would like the, the board to authorize the posting and mailing of a file of demolition. Notice that'll be posted on the shed, and will be sent to. Um, AT and T's corporate offices in New Jersey, and their corporate national headquarters in Dallas, Texas.
Okay, that's, thank you. Desi, wait a moment.
Roll call Irene, hi, Desi.
I, my apologies a thousand percent, I am just so. Alright.
That, before we move on, I also want the board to take one more motion, so that's not the latest matter at present, I know the board wants to address it, um. I'd like a motion, so I, I prepared letters to be sent to the property, or the adjoining property owners at six sixty three and six sixty four Canal Road. Right, that letter ex- explains that obviously, we need the consent to enter their land. To not only inspect the shed, uh, but have a contractor give support for it, and then ultimately. Pray the shed and remove the contents from it. Um, I'd like the board to make a motion, authorize then Mike's sending or, uh, Mr. Hess's, uh. Presentation of those letters to the property owners contingent upon A T T not timely responding to a demolition notice.
Okay, I'll make that motion, then, you know, send letters to the adjacent property owners at either. Huxford or Collins Office.
Contingent.
On AT and T not responding in a timely manner. Roll call Irene, hi, Desi. Thank you, um, thank you again. Alright, the next item is the proposed demolition through the municipal claim and taxing law. This is, uh, recommended by attorney Garland, attorney, the township can seek reimbursement for attorney fees. When filing and pursuing a lien claims, accomplishes this purpose by adopting a fee schedule for attorney fees concerning legal services. Related to filing and pursuing those claims, which municipal claim and taxing law requires, so I'll make that. Motion to adopt the resolution for the municipal claim and taxing law.
I'll second.
Roll call Irene, hi, Desi.
Hi.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't wanna have you doing that, but. I know, I know, yeah.
We don't, we have a dozen people we follow, but to the extent we do, we obviously want to be reimbursed for our costs.
But.
And the, the lien law, ours, that we have a fee schedule.
Yep.
For those attorney fees that we're trying to recover.
Absolutely, and as we do, working closely with your office now. Um, I've been working, I've been throwing it in to Alicia monthly, so. For, for those who see the signs up in, in the office, just let them know, if you're engaging in a project for the township, there may be additional legal and engineering costs associated with your projects. And, um, so you may receive a letter from this township, because we act as a house group. When we get any, um, things that come from engineering. When we get any um things that come from engineering or legal services. So you get a letter from us, it's a legit letter. And the um billing is attached to it and it always called either agency to verify that that going to be listed. But everything that we're sent that we're sending to you both being sent over to call up that as well. So and unfortunately, results not be. Within a certain amount of time, we can't take active, but we had answered property, so. Um alright, so that this is an important part of of our function. Our next item is such valid foods. Uh there's a letter of credit for auto increase. The amount will increase from. Three hundred eighty one thousand one hundred sixty six dollars and ninety eight cents to four hundred nineteen thousand two hundred eighty three dollars and sixty eight cents. My next item for discussion is the proposal for act security for six oh one Marion Drive. This is from Julia Wise. The application is received. If we wait a hundred and eighty days, it will not incur any additional costs. And what is mattered goes into act security and the applicant is willing to wait a hundred and eighty.
If you don't wait, if you don't wait the hundred and eighty days, you have to hold a hearing to put the property in an act security era. Cut in the alternative, if you just wait the hundred and eighty days by operating the law to property under C I S A.
I don't think there's any problems there. Next item is the road maintenance. Um this this is proposed by Peter to help up um create a five year maintenance plan to get road space. And making it um run through the cycle, which includes cleaning out the culverts. And it's Peter's intention to supply Valerie with a map. Everything, I believe this is just, we've been discussing this for a while. Uh but as we're getting up to date with our technology and our reminders, we're getting more of these schedules, keeping things on track. So. Kind of nice. There's no motion to be made here, is that correct?
No, no.
Alright, tree trimming. I would prefer to get uh quotes, but everyone keeps telling us we're too far out. I think which you've taken the the lead on that. And values to the thing. Next item is the Wichita Road Culvert, thirty twenty Wichita Road. This is starting to fail. Engineer Cass recommends a pipe replacement for the onset of roadway settlements. Chuck, are you able to update me a little bit on this here?
Um I think I think there was authorization given last month.
I thought so.
To receive with uh. You know, engineering design, yeah, I think we have to survey there a little bit. And then again, permits for that one. And once that's in place. You know, whether we put it out to bid, because I'm assuming the township wouldn't self perform.
Correct.
That work, so. Uh other than that, I do not have any update.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I guess we like to keep things on the agenda till they're over and done.
Yes, that's good reminder.
Thank you. Next item are the twenty twenty four road projects. Engineer has to give us estimates for Sheridan Road South from Willington Boulevard to Lovin County for three hundred twenty six thousand four hundred forty five dollars and nine cents. Sheridan Road North from Willington Boulevard to School Road, three hundred seventy thousand six hundred one dollars and forty cents. Dowford Road, nine hundred and one thousand four hundred eighty four dollars and nine cents to end Wichita Road. Five hundred thirty two thousand two hundred sixty one dollars and ninety cents for a total of. Two million one hundred thirty thousand seven hundred ninety three dollars and twenty nine cents.
Hmm.
We don't have that money. Uh approval was to work on first with Sheridan Road South. For Willington Boulevard to Lovin County, and I believe we did that last week.
We did, and then I was kind of waiting for the meeting minutes because because mine's my notes were. That the board also.
I thought we did.
Wanted us to uh evaluate uh School Road.
Yeah, yeah.
And Woods Drive.
Yeah.
For costs. And I think predominantly School Road was possibly look with those costs. Looking for a grant application. For L S A, perhaps. At least that's what my notes were.
Yeah, that was in the last meeting. I remember they were talking about Woods Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I will get on that.
Okay.
Um both School Road evaluation. And we're starting from where the reconstruction ended. And going over the rest of the way out to the west. Um and then Woods Drive also taking a look at that, giving you some cost numbers um for that. And then one or both of the projects might be some, the L S A grant might cover.
Thank you. Right, next item are the guide rails. Again, engineer has suggested that we prioritize Willington Boulevard for this year. And he has given us an estimate of thirty thousand five hundred. Kick rewrote and Ballinger Road can follow next year, and so I guess we're gonna need PA one call for us.
Well, it's it's really not P A one, obviously we'll do a P A one call, but what I'm gonna initiate is um. Getting getting the project qualified for the fuels and also, I believe we can solicit quotas. For that, no, we have the public bid, we want revealing wage rates for that. Because I think.
Correct, yes, correct, yeah. Okay, can you can you buy guide rail on Penbridge?
Uh we're on co-star, that's a good idea. Um and that might be a valid way to go about it.
Right, because that because that doesn't have to be publicly bid.
Right.
I think co-stars.
So what I can do is um reach out to a couple of guide rail contractors, see if they are co-stars approved. And they are, I I will assume we still need drive soliciting for at least three quotes and or per, you know, proposals, I think.
Now, if it's if it's if it's. If it's purpose through co-stars, it avoids public bidding through the township because it's already been publicly bid to the state.
Right, but. So I always try to at least get three proposals. Even under the co-stars, because they can vary this in the group.
Okay.
Um so I'll work on getting that uh in line. First, then first. Finding out if we have some local guide rail companies, because there's three that I'm familiar with, and checking then to see if they're co-stars uh participants.
Thank you very much.
Why why don't you? All all. To get tough team quotes for.
Okay.
I think that might have been.
Yeah.
Co-stars are the good.
I guess they're not repeating it, just that basically did it. So I'll uh I'll make the motions of authorized stuff.
Okay.
To uh get us some quotes on guide rails. For the Willington Boulevard, this is shit. Rock Hall, I mean, uh Jesse. I really hope Peter doesn't want to see me again.
And and even though it's called the co-stars, I'll still explore it if you'd like, it would be fun. For that.
Yeah.
Where it is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, um. Um I think Val mentioned there might be some other funding for this too. Um. Oh no, she said she was looking at something. I don't know. Um, thank you. It's. It's in here. Okay, thank you. Alright. The next two items, the Ballinger Road bill overflow matter.
I I I do have a brief update for the board on that matter during executive session. That I will say, the board may take action on this matter. After that executive session to authorize uh S D's preparation of a restoration plan with respect to Mr. Tom promptly.
But we're gonna leave this.
We're gonna we're gonna do that after executive session.
Yes. Alright, the next item is equipment and equipment repair. There's nothing new this time. I've never seen that in the genre before, but thank you. Alright, well, I guess there is some new stuff there because on the next item says new file.
That we are waiting on that.
Oh, you're right.
We're not gonna go through this at this point, because we have two years of the poll.
Okay, okay. So. Well, alright, so all mentioned, because it's on the agenda, new estimates uh for E M Cuts Incorporated. There's a quote for the ninety seven inch natural dump dump truck root slide cloud and busting. All sounds so fancy. Um Glenn 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 Hill, I think that's it, forty two by twelve inch. Straight length for seventeen thousand six hundred eighty two dollars. E M Cuts quote for forty five inch named moldboard height with double cam and spring, twenty three thousand seven hundred seventy five. Let's know eleven inch new year jet stream cloud with a side package of twenty thousand two hundred ninety dollars. But we're gonna hold off until fall twenty twenty four and possibly look into grants.
So there could be grant funding for Evans Tire Frost Set Up.
Okay.
So there's, we're holding off on.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Alright, next item is the. Uh we need some signs, no emergency, no parking, twelve of those at thirty six dollars a piece or four hundred thirty two dollars total. Dangerous intersection two for seventy five dollars a piece for a hundred fifty dollars total. Three hundred foot distance from trucks. Two those at eighty eight dollars a piece for a hundred seventy six dollars with a grand total of seven hundred fifty eight dollars. I'm seeing you guys talk about this. I'm familiar with most of this.
There was some uh talk about signs, but I believe we need.
Yeah, we do need them. So I'll make the motion to approve the sign as above. The two, the snow emergency, no parking for twelve of those. Uh a total of four hundred thirty two dollars. Dangerous intersection two of those uh for a total of a hundred fifty dollars. A three hundred foot distance from trucks for a total of a hundred seventy six dollars with a grand total of seven hundred fifty eight dollars.
A motion.
Like that. Do we need twelve? Yes. It's not necessarily.
It's for everything.
Yeah.
Even my brother's six on his car.
Wait, you're gonna motion please. Rock Hall, I mean, hi, Jesse. Hmm. Signs don't go missing. Yes, we we need the signs, trust me. So if there's no emergency route and there is no emergency. And there's availability of cloud, you're gonna shut off. Is that a true statement and not just like? That's your statement, so I don't know. I'm having to see, is that what?
Still, there were some issues with plowing to the curb this year, um because people didn't move their cars.
What about last, the cars were moved and it was not? Yeah.
There there was something that there was. Um I didn't see it because I'm on my own. Uh I didn't physically drive up in downtown. I do know some of the plow people were having issues with cars not moving. There's another issue too about we we talked about trying to find a spot for people to move cars off Main Street and we lost that property with the fire company in. So now there's no issue where. I always, I felt, I we, there was also another idea of having people park in the park. And then I was worried about them getting stuck in the mud and crossing and falling in. So if there's a lot of stuck.
That's a problem up on my road. Now, everyone usually pulls their cars off the street, so there's no one on the street and they're still not on curb to curb. In defense, I want to say two thirty eight miles within this township with two guys coming out, maybe three. It's a lot for for two or three people to do. And they go up multiple times throughout the day. They're out there sometimes at three A M. So.
I'm a plowder before you plow.
Right, right. So 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 I I guess in in their in their defense, I want to say they're doing the best job that they can with the equipment and the time that they have to. But if the rest of the world's moving cars off the snowy road, smooth Main Street, the expectation of those residents is that. You are gonna plow curb to curb. And we're gonna, we're gonna work on that for upcoming snowstorms. We're gonna.
And what I have.
Yep.
There was a lot of cars stopping.
Right.
Hmm. Uh there were, there were a lot of cars, and I was in downtown, I'm playing backpack, and I'm on my way out to call. And I personally went out there with my sub compact on my own time and cleared my whole section street.
Oh, it's on scene if cars are.
Well, we can't, we can't, unfortunately, we don't have a spot.
They ticketed the tow, so.
Yeah, but we don't.
Of course, we don't, we don't, so if you come down, it's like we ticketed a single car on Main Street because they're not moved. There's quite a bit this year. But they, the police officers have better things to do during a snowstorm as well. We're not gonna tie them up when they're responding to. So given the equipment that we have and and the manpower that we have. It's something that we need to address, but for right now, I I guess I have to say they're doing the best job that they can, given the timeframe and and the equipment that they have. We all would like a perfect job done all the time, but sometimes we need to stop to accept that we're able to get out and get off to the main strip and get to the the more of the road that we need to get to. I felt the same thing. I drove home one night during one of these snowcaps where it started snowing. Like later in the day, by nine o'clock, the roads were covered. I knew I wasn't married and once there was only a single lane open. Was I frustrated? Yes, but I was able to make it home. So and my road too is not about curb to curb. My my old neighbors complained, I'm like. Just deal with her, you know, I'm sorry, just deal with it, but yes, we'll have to have further discussion about that in the future. Alright, thank you. Next item, the M T C A, this this lease was edited by M T C A. And the supervisor really reviewed the changes and so we can take a look at them.
We if we looked at.
Yep, we made the motion for it. Excellent, because I took a look at it and have no problems. You know.
Is that the that the town hall?
It was, it was so much. Thank you, okay. So the two items, I believe, that were changed, the the date of the agreement was changed to reflect the correct date because it was dated for twenty twenty three. The other thing was that the 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 time they're given to M T C A to move the trailer of of the park with six cents to ninety days rather than five. So those were the only two significant changes. The lease is already on my top height. I have no problems with those changes.
I know either.
Okay, and I think Peter had any of any uh um.
Opposition.
Opposition, thank you. Thank you. That's something. So I will motion to adopt the lease as edited by M T C A. I'll second. Rock Hall, I mean, hi, Jesse. Alright, the next item, we discussed the trash legal revenue contract. Um. Okay.
So. Alright, so I do just, I wanna I wanna know to the people here that the. The purr bag often for low crash volume generators is not just specific to seniors. And you, anyone can utilize that that program under the track and receding contract. Thanks. I I I know there's been some question about whether it only applies to seniors. Seniors get up like Mr. D G N R said, under the contract, two point five percent discount. But any anyone, any resident who gets trash service from Scarrow has the ability to elect the purr bag rate. And when you, if you elect the purr bag rate, you're paying forty dollars for five bags, eight dollars a bag, you have to buy them if it comes with five. To pay forty dollars for.
Dude, it's they sell labels. The residents provide their own decks.
Okay, well, in that case, you're buying, you're buying.
And you set that up with the township or? No, you call them the truck.
Correct, yeah, you buy you buy the labels from.
Thank you. Yeah, they got it.
That makes sense.
Someone mentioned they will always take their trash someplace else. Wouldn't Edward Russell be still?
Yeah, yes, I read.
So if they put their trash.
Yeah, she's still gonna do.
Yep. And for those of you that are thinking of burning your trash can do. Yeah, we recently had an incident within the township that someone decided to burn their trash. And uh there were um tires in that trash. And that is a huge violation and I could easily have been fined ten thousand dollars uh from the D E P. So if you're not burning your trash at all. Oh, no, nope, nope. The only the only fires you're allowed to have are, it's like a cooking fire outside your house. Yeah. So there's no burns of anything here inside or burned by a rolling? Um. But I do see that. Yep, that's correct.
So so.
We have to follow the burn ordinance. Nope, can't be burning that stuff. You could have uh outdoor fire for the purpose of cooking. Yeah, so you you see, there's, we have, we have our burn ordinance.
But I think I think, I think the board, the burn ordinance is a little bit more expansive than you said. I reviewed it last year when we. Wildfires in Canada, you know.
Yeah.
The the smoke in this area. I think I think that the burn ordinance is a little bit more expansive. Um it's online, it's online for for review.
Brush. Um you can have for cooking purposes, but you can't burn your trash.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, you can't burn like a hazard hazard, anything that would, you know, fully be narrow, like a tire or a living cans. But what's wrong with it? Okay, please.
Yeah. Yeah, and if you know you're going to be doing something like that, we should be calling into the office and one of them know we're gonna be doing.
Because, but do you know what? We require a burn permit?
No.
No, no permit.
No. Yeah, is that something that you get up on the website? Is the burn ordinance?
It is.
I'm sorry, I have to review it myself. I apologize when I spoke about it. It's on. Or a day, so we're we're in a ten o'clock. Right. Let's set the hour. Yeah, we've had a couple of incidents where people are burning things that they shouldn't be burning and it's not a good thing to do. Yeah. Alright, next item for discussion is Twilight Eaters four one one zero primary driver's parkway. They probably use cans in the public and they do not have a dumpster. Um. Can we send a letter to P P? Can you please inform me on this issue?
Yeah, um so we talked about it at the meeting and reports if they have cans, it's gonna have to be in Scarrow.
Okay.
Um also.
They can't contract.
Right, that's what they just also talk with. We make the, there was an issue where we had to have. When the the rental place was going up, I asked how we, a division for the dumpster to block. When the the rental place was going up, I asked them how we, a division for the dumpster to block. It from sight and when they don't have a dumpster over there anymore, so now they would need to put one up front.
So you mean the new storage facility?
Yes.
Okay, so the storage, like, okay, remind a little bit here, if you're using.
So they wanna put a dumpster there.
The Twilight Acres?
No, no.
Oh, the 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 storage facility?
Correct, the storage facility wants a dumpster there, um and they had to follow, and I believe their, the issue was, the code was, they had to put a. A a wind block.
Right, the the property maintenance code or fire, the dumpster be shielded.
To be shielded, right, so now they have cans there that are not from J P Mascaro people, right, so they, now they have cans there, um they 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 have to be from J P Mascaro. They can't be from their Republic, but they use Republic in the summer time, so they don't. Okay, but now they have a dumpster there, so we should have the permit. We have to make them put a block up too, right, because it's not there.
Jesse, are you talking about Twilight Acres?
Right, they they don't have a dumpster.
They don't have a dumpster.
No.
They, but they.
And they have a total of cans out there.
But do they wanna continue with the cans service?
So since I live aside of them, what I think they have been doing is in the winter time, they have four cans out back. And in the summertime, they get a dumpster every summer.
So you're asking, can we send a letter notify them that are contracted? Um.
So someone called in and wants to have it public.
Okay, so you're saying, can we notify them that we have, we currently are contracted with J P Mascaro? We need to put them on notice that they need to use J P Mascaro and not no longer can use.
It's a residential property?
No, it's commercial property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, but our contract covers residences not commercial, not their own properties. So it's up to them how they wanna dispose their trash.
Okay.
So they can do it, well, it's can or not. Yeah, but but if they, if they, if they have a dumpster, it needs to, it needs to comply with the property maintenance.
Because in the, in the summer, they go to dumpster.
And if they're gonna, if they're gonna, if they're gonna put a pad for the dumpster, then may needs stormwater.
That's not gonna be, that's a trigger storm. I I doubt they put a dumpster in because they're obviously looking to to move the facility.
They do have one.
So we're all, and and that was a particular.
Yeah.
Topic I mentioned to the architect that they're planning to not show an area for a dumpster.
Well, they, I I can, I I can hear they have one.
They're planning on, when was that approved?
It was not approved, they simply had zoning proof. They needed some relief from some setbacks, they got that, so a land development plan is pending.
Well, then, well then, well then, the land development plan needs to show the location.
Correct.
And screening for the dumpster.
Correct.
If that's the one.
But at their current location now, where they're at now, if they wanna put a dumpster in, yes, they would have to put screening around. They wanna continue to use cans with an independent hauler of some sort.
It can, so long it can. So long as it's consistent with our threshold.
Oh, okay, okay, because. Yeah, there's usually a dump in there in summer and they can't turn.
Well, if if the dumpster's there, then it should be screened, it has to have a screening required, oh, because you you meant to know a storage area.
Yeah, the the new storage facility is south for storage.
Okay, that that has a dumpster with screening shown on the approved land development plan. The owner last month asked to enlarge the size of that. And that was approved, and subsequently, I think the next day, they contacted me, they wanted to move the dumpster path outside of the screened in. For the fenced in secure area. And the location they had shown was problematic for me, because they wanted to put it beside uh another building. And it would have required a trash trucks to pull in and back out on Canal Road. All the while, the building was blocking a lot of sight for the driver of the truck, so that was denied, and I have not heard back from them yet as to what their plan will be.
Okay. So do you know our trash ordinance regulates a temporary dumpster?
I believe it does not, I know that they can use any hauler for dumpster, it will be our our back to hauler.
Right. Okay. It it don't, it doesn't, it doesn't happen up here.
Yeah, the question needs to happen.
Yeah, so I know that um they on eighty-five Main Street, the old social hall, and they put Eagle cans out. But they are not on the building list, so they should be on the building list for eighty-five Main Street, correct?
Well, again, is that, is that a residence?
That's a residential. Oh, they will fire.
So so it's not, it's not a residence, it shouldn't be serviced by our contractor.
They they have Eagle cans and they.
And have, have Eagle, have Eagle taken?
Yes.
Okay, well, then they did that without being paid.
Okay.
Ah.
They also have a residential property there too.
If they have a residential property, they 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 can and will be serviced by Mascaro.
Okay.
And will pay for it. But any, again, and any commercial industrial property will not have traffic up by us here.
Yes.
And I suspect they will be more competent in regulating this.
What what would you, you were gonna send a letter to J P Mascaro?
No, we were sending a letter um saying they had to use my Scaro or.
Now, did it?
So because they're.
I, I would simply, I would, I would, I would have the township send a letter. Lively advising the property owner that to the extent they have a dumpster, even if it's temporary, it needs to be screened from public.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if I need to know how they have a dumpster ever now, it's just.
No, they don't, but they will.
But if they do, if they do at all.
Yeah.
Unless the traffic ordinance has some provision for temporary.
Because.
Screening around.
Right. I mean.
What are the words?
Yeah.
I'll make the motions to notify the owners of Twilight Acres. That they need to have proper screen if they have a dumpster on their property, even if it's a temporary dump dumpster. Or seasonal dumpster in accordance with our local ordinances. Next, you want to do your call? Um Royal Harry.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Sorry, Chuck was telling me something that we have always been, I apologize. Are we a big one then? Okay, next item is the Brooks County Public Works Association meeting. Uh this is April eleventh at the Ole Fairgrounds in Ole, uh registration is open until April first, this is educational, teaching, teaching will be. Equal walk programs and associated equipment and chemicals. Um uh we need to authorize with the ten, which would be road crew and emergency management coordinator. Um so I'll make the motion to authorize road crew and emergency management coordinator to attend this if they so choose.
I'll second it.
Royal Harry.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Next item is the polling place agreement, which is April twenty-third and November fifth, office will be used by election services for voting. The agreement needs to be filled out and returned by March fifteenth, which was already done. Uh we just need to make the motion to ratify, I will make the motion to ratify the polling place agreements.
So I'm starting with that.
Royal Harry.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Alright, next item is the Penn dot mobile contact, this is contact number three nine zero zero three nine five nine four, which expired on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Uh we need to fill out the resolution page and return it to renew for a three-year contract that will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Uh this is route four twenty, Christmas Village Road and Silver Hocken Road. I will uh make the motions to uh um. Fill out the resolution ratifying the contact number three nine zero zero three nine five nine four.
I'll second it.
Royal Harry.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Alright, next item is the dumpster exemption, can you guys please clarify me on this, I'm a little bit confused.
So years ago, when they first started to destroy, and suddenly. Um the secretaries mailed out with a newsletter a form to former residential properties um. That the.
Just to discuss it before.
See as a proof that they have a dumpster.
Oh.
If they get a dumpster, then.
Because we don't want them burning trash. Okay. Got it, alright, so you're asking for us to say, we send out those letters to those businesses, sending us proof of a dumpster at their locations. I think that's excellent idea, we've had a lot of businesses change over the years, so, alright. So I'll make the motion for the secretaries to send out letters to the local businesses, verifying, ensuring some elements of proof that. They do in fact have trash and and dumpster services at their locations.
I'll second that.
Royal Harry.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Uh you know, this is about Adobe acrobat, okay, this is an interesting one. Uh Adobe acrobat standard twenty twenty, owning this program is a one-time cost of three hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. As more cost efficient than paying for a really subscription of a hundred and fifty-six dollars. Uh two years of paid subscription would cover the cost of purchasing, it can be uploaded to all the computers. This will help to adjust PDF documents without having to re-scan everything. Peter McCarty is looking into tires thing and Solby from Alford has a quote.
Which they did, yeah, this is close to have that pay.
Um. In the twelve eighty-five, yes. Eleven nine, something like that.
Here's.
Go purchase.
Somebody's put it on.
Yeah, the road and the other things.
Um I mean. He isn't, uh this thing, I'll put that in. As much as we use Adobe, it's not worth it, we don't see that much.
Okay, so you're not using it that much.
Definitely, we're not solving, but if Peter can love us something like, it's really cheap.
So so it's not something that you need, no, okay, then I. Not this time, and I think with working with Sol, I see, I think they're going to help us to beat our computer usage. And help us with best practices and what we we could be doing a little bit better, and that's what I'm hoping for, and we still have to talk about a Microsoft three sixty. We want package and all that stuff that we haven't worked with, so, alright. Um to John Corning, I think for the emergency management reporting report. Okay, I have nothing other than to mention that there was a local fire, there were some issues with that, um. Uh and so he just wants, I I guess part of what he communicated with to me. The authority on what can and can't be burned comes from the, this the township and the ordinance, please do not take any advice from any outside agencies. Um there, again, there was an instance where misinformation was given to this homeowner as to what can be burnt. And uh John was polite enough and told that he looks intimidating, he's a really nice guy, went up to the property owner. Initially started out as as angry words, but then the property owner understood that this is his responsibility. To be familiar with what can and can't be burned, so again, for the correct information, please call into the office. And so what the is within the burn ordinance, what you can and can't burn, and I apologize if I misspoke earlier. Next item is the A R L E grant funding program through Penn dot, this is the pre, the pre-application for grant funding for Rover, divail signs. Et cetera, with a maximum total of three million, I think this is what Val may have been talking about previously, I'm not familiar with this, are you?
I I did not get this.
Okay, do you have anything about this Lisa?
Uh I did scan it in there, I'm gonna try to.
That's okay, that's important, it's there, if you want, I can make.
That's okay.
So it's, it's basically a pre-application to send um for us to send in a B uh. Okay, Chuck, is that something you'd be able to take a look at too?
Certainly, I'm not familiar with what, what, you know, is is being. What you're gonna include.
Okay.
What the amount is.
If the divail and any rover could be included, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, right, the other road taking projects, we have numbers for now, so we can substantiate that.
Absolutely, so I guess. Forward that information over each other. That would be wonderful.
Need.
Yeah, so I. Alright, um so we don't need to motion, correct, then, alright, next item is with sadness. Uh Secretary Susan Bobby will be reducing her hours, uh this is one to two days a week.
How is that?
Um I'll make the motion.
Motion, yeah.
Uh I'll make a motion to approve. Um, um.
I'll side with second.
Royal Harry.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
In the same breath then, uh Secretary Susan Bobby will be changing her position to assistant secretary.
I'll make that motion.
Royal Harry.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
The next item is to redesign the assistant secretary, you said, at regularly changing positions to secretary.
I'll make that motion.
Royal Harry.
Hi.
Jesse. And again, the motion to change the the designation of assistant secretary Valerie, but they're changed the position to secretary.
I'll motion to have Valerie got her major position secretary.
Royal Harry.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Thank you too, and I hope we could keep you here at least two to three days a week, otherwise I'll just keep bothering you to wake you up so long.
We can still get on the main one.
Yeah.
She is the.
Oh, and she, she's our coach super, I mean, you know, you know, school it is, where it is, when it is, so. Yeah, well, I I guess having said that, this did, pretty come on, this is probably the first time that she married, you know, where you don't have someone. Who was born or raised in county on the board and in the office, so we're, you know, that's not true. The the student, you've had other people like the entire board and the office staff not from this area. They have.
Where, when?
Secretary from.
But you have members of the board that were from here. That originally were born here and raised here, that's what I'm saying, so none of us were born and raised here. I, my children have been born here, but I personally wasn't, so I think this might be the first time. And and I think it's a wonderful board, and we're, things have changed so much for them the past couple of months, we're just moving along and and we need help, so. Alright, last, I don't know much about the secretaries and holidays, so are all three secretaries getting paid for all the holidays?
I just plan on being asked to get paid for all of yours. For vacation.
Yeah.
I'm eliminating my hours, I'm almost stuck to pay for it. I give a lot of time to this passion, but you guys don't know.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's complaints, I've, I have come in after, I come home from work and I come here, she's here, it's five o'clock, it's six o'clock. Melissa was the same way in the summer, they never put her for the time, they didn't. Alright, next item. I'm gonna move this way. So, because you don't know, our water softener just might come foot. Um, I guess, having functioned that water softener, we just wouldn't be able to use the the the. The water fountain. So do we need it for like washing our hands a little bit?
So.
We need one, okay.
So so here's what a water softener does, it essentially makes your water soft and trips the minerals out.
Right, right.
And it also protects your pipes from getting eaten out by. Iron and other minerals in the water, um so as long as it's gonna be light, it would be safe to drink. But the pipes would be exposed to more corrosion, um and the water wouldn't be soft, now you're not bathing in it.
Right.
Right, so.
We're blocking and washing our hands here.
Right, so. I don't, I, I wouldn't replace the water softener because of the new building, but it also depends on how far out that new building is gonna be, but then again. We don't really need a water softener.
For the function of the toilet.
For the functioning of what's going on here.
Yeah. Switch to shut down the the water fountain essentially.
No, we're going to turn it on?
We don't.
It will just sit it right.
We are not gonna touch any.
No.
No, we're.
So so again.
Yeah.
We're gonna be putting, we're gonna be putting a water softener and spending essentially five thousand dollars for something that already has completely damaged pipes.
Right.
So we're really not gonna do anything worse to these pipes by the water softener.
Yeah, so 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 if I'm saying that.
Everybody, you get a water.
Sure. You drink the water, you know.
No, no. Drink the water from my. Are you trying, are you trying boil water to get more? No, that's, uh. You just have one quote.
Right, right.
Right, we had one quote and and I was not happy with it.
Okay.
The thing is, is.
You're wonderful.
How much stuff is broken in the bathroom? So you replace the bed two, three years, how many things keep on happening, but it's still, it's been getting more and more expensive? We're we're chasing, you know. We're chasing that whole these problems, unfortunately, things haven't been maintained, so. I'm of the the mindset, Jesse, it's, let's just hold off on water softening system for now. Keep up with the youth life, there should be water in kitchens, you have to put a lot of water.
The youth life needs to be serviced every eight months minimum.
Yeah, yeah.
And and. They should have take a glass and insert out and set that as well.
Yeah.
Um because if water isn't being filtered out properly, what happens is it's that glass. Um. Gets full of sediment and the light kind of lasts to three water, three water. And and I, I only know all this is because unfortunately, Martin had lived in my house, when I came into this town. And and I I only know all this is because unfortunately, Martin had did my house when I came into this township and my water was polluted. And I had to redo the entire system myself and fix all their screw up.
Uh, because uh, over a year, it's like five big year to go. I put another water softener in my house.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, I gotta cover quotes. It was quite a bit of difference.
Yeah, yeah.
They're very expensive. They're too expensive, yeah. I I see.
Yeah, we're gonna we're gonna hold off on that then. So I guess Lisa, then, if you're gonna be printing water for you guys to take to all the facilities we need to, but you know. We'll we'll put it as part of the of expenses, cause we we will be able to have more. Yeah, the warning.
We're looking for like the water bottle.
So so if I can ask you, ladies, ladies, please, ladies, ladies, we're not on. If I can ask you and and Val monitor what we need and let us know, and then we can come back to that issue. If we need to get a bottle and service, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. All right, um, so we're gonna hold off on that. Um, I'm gonna go through the comments and then we'll go, we'll adjourn for executive.
Success.
That's for uh executive session. Um, Peter's not here. Uh, I don't have a police report. Do you have a police report? Uh, that was, again, I can run it into the company that was standing. It would be fine. That would be fine, um. Like, uh, you know, I guess. Just to, the L S A grant that we received.
I would like to make it.
Um, go ahead, Kimberly.
Um. This past Tuesday, we were awarded, and I went out on behalf of the twenty twenty-three headboard board works program. Um, grants on behalf of cleaning the design for the little. Um, so the amount was.
Just a thousand five hundred seventy-five.
Yeah, just under seventy-two dollars. And I will have a more detailed breakdown, but we believe it will cover the majority of the remaining design. And upon the D E P's acceptance of the special study, which approved the low pressure plan. High security proposals, we will send very diligent budget updates to the township. To inform you of exactly what that grant amount is going towards and projected. Um, amount left, or if we feel it won't cover the entire balance of design, including the construction bidding documents. I believe at this time, the construction bidding documents are going to be the potential outlier or overage of the grant amount.
Okay. So it's a definite yes, but the funding did.
Yes.
Approved, okay.
Yes.
On that note, then, I need to go to Fulton Bank and set up an account and put a thousand dollars into that account. In order to receive those funds. Does that have to be amended to the agenda?
Can you ask that one more time?
So in order to accept the grants, we have to have a separate account at the bank. And I need to over funds. It's it's a housekeeping measure, basically, so I need to have a motion on the table in order to.
When will the funds be?
That is up to, you have to keep a close on our email. When we submitted for this grant, we designated people to sign for it.
Okay.
As you recall, last year, there was a little bit of an issue.
This is only, this is only administrative in the.
In nature, yes.
Can we wait, can we wait until?
Yes, we can possibly, you should wait until they sign that paper.
Probably agree with your son.
Yes.
But.
There will be.
Execute that, get at the same time.
Those 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 matters can be on the agenda for next month, Peter.
Absolutely, and it really depends on when those emails.
That in that case, let's let's wait and put them on the agenda.
We can make sure that we have acceptance of L S A grant for next month, and in in that same, in that same. Yeah.
Topic.
Topic, we need to make sure that there's approval for um opening up an account to receive those funds through Fulton Bank.
And as a note, um, D C E D is notorious for being delayed, just because they have so many grants to administer. Prepare all that paperwork for, so it is great to have that on the agenda and be aware that thing might. Take a couple of weeks to even get that made up to you.
That's fine, that's great. Thank you again, Kimberly. Thank you for putting in the work towards that grant opportunity to, um. So I guess, uh, going back a little bit early to what we were talking about, some of these special grants and stuff. When it comes to funding of the building, uh, Fulton Bank did discuss with me that the autumn reduce rates for townships. And that I'd have to involve the solicitor in order to um be able to apply for. Are you familiar with those at all, Colin? Offering the email that uh they sent.
Municipal financing?
Exactly.
Not not, no, uh, but.
Yeah.
We typically refer those types of matters to um s- specific bond.
Okay.
Financing council.
So then, as as we get further along in this, cause again, I don't see we jumped the gun, but we got excited over the opportunity to essentially have a building fully funded. Uh, but understanding that if we were to get only twenty-five percent, it would have been roughly five hundred thousand dollars. Even given the current um rate of interest right now, that would come out to less than. What we actually budget for our building repairs annually. So we knew that if we were to have received that amount. We would have been able to afford that mortgage with the current rate, but when the bank informed me of the ability to have a reduced rate, that was even like two hundred more, yeah. It it was fantastic. So I guess when we um get to that part quickly, we'll both be around, and uh. I'll be able to bring that up again. We'll be able to move forward and see what else we how we could benefit, so thank you. Um, I guess, um, did you want to read the police report? I'll I'll leave that for you then. Uh, I just want to thank you since so Kimberly and Joe for staying on top of everything for us, like you guys are absolutely amazing. Helping us out with all the grant work. I I just.
And then also collaboration with Chuck.
Oh, yeah, why? Oh, yeah, yeah, but but everyone is just absolutely fantastic. Chuck, Colin, like you guys are amazing. I think we have a fantastic team. Um, I think, you know, welcoming again Valerie and and Lisa to the office. They're just, it always seems like there's more and more and more work to be done. And there's never enough hands. It seems like there's never enough time. You guys always put together for the meetings, and I appreciate it immensely. Sorry for my fumbling tonight. I'm just all following my head. I'll turn it over to Jessica. Jessica's gonna do the police report.
All right, the Tola Hawk Township Police Department's monthly report. Uh, they patrolled seven hundred and twenty-one miles. They worked sixty hours. Their patrol hours were thirty-two. There were a total of. Yeah, total of six incidents. Um, there were two total complaints, six miscellaneous calls for service. One follow-up in, one follow-up call. Five total phone assignments. Rental alarms were zero. EMS and fire advisors were ten. They had nine traffic stops. They had fourteen citations um given out. They had five traffic incidents, one security check. One motor's assistant and one uh three total court appearances this month, and that's our let's own report.
Do you have any further comments?
I don't know.
Chuck, do you have any comments for this evening?
That's right.
Colin?
No.
Lisa, anything?
Uh, Jess is ready and, yeah, everybody can sign up for that. That's the best way of getting the information out. Um, I would say, you know, only a couple of people knew that, and I'm not sure what other forms of. Communication, um, the residents would like to help you.
Because, you know, it's.
Everything's on the website. We're sending out notifications.
Yeah, I think it's tough for some people to realize, like, communication has changed a little bit. We have to do, I hate to say it, but it's a little bit more affordable for us and sending out letters and mailing. We get quite expensive, so.
Yes.
Um.
The yard sale flyer that I am sending out during your town here is a paragraph on it about sending that person.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much. Yeah, Lisa, would would we have any way of getting their flyer onto the website for the the yard sale?
Yeah, yes.
You can get it. Yeah, I can.
Okay.
I can scan it, but I got it up there, yeah. Yes, so we should have. That would be very useful, um. And uh, if there's the other line, homeowners can use any pumper they want, as long as they are registered with terror tracker.
Yeah, and we're looking for letters to support a new building in this area.
Yeah, and we do have a template available to anyone who wants to provide a letter of support for the sewer. Or if you'd like to write something, whether it's three lines or if you wanna write, uh, you know, how this is possibly even negatively impacting you. If you wanna drop that off at the office, whatever you can do, that would be very helpful for for all of us in here. Um, we have.
I think there's copies up there. Come in there now.
Yeah.
Right, so. What was the channel we're using? We're going to.
Recre- recess the meeting for.
Okay, so we're gonna recess the meeting for exactly second. So thank you everyone for their time this evening.
Yep.
You want to.
Yes, you can come back. I'll see if you wanna look around. It's gonna save.